Would changes the previous minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye to have it. This is a specific proof. Um, who else? Kathy?
Your honor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mary.
I have payment requisition number seven for the wastewater project. It is in the total amount of fifty-three thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty-three cents, which the BEP will round up to the next highest dollar amount. It includes a reimbursement to the utility board for a legal invoice from what Nana did they pay, invoice from men engineers, an invoice from Region Two Planning Development Council, and payout number six from Rover Construction, Inc. Although the contract, one contractor, Hazlet, has been at work and moving very rapidly on the plant portion of this project, they have not submitted a payout application yet and we expect a very large one next month. So, for right now, we just have Rover. And you have motion and a vote to submit this repayment out of the BEP.
Your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Move second?
I don't think that...
Any questions? Call me, everybody.
Everything's going well.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you all so much, I appreciate it.
Right, thank you. You have anything else?
That's all.
Al Brenner? On there.
Counsel? Their stats for the month of December. Skip those and go right to our total activity for 2019. We had thirty-nine felony arrests, had two-hundred-and-thirty misdemeanor arrests, one-hundred-and-forty-nine misdemeanor citations were issued, had seven-hundred-and-twenty-one traffic citations issued, sixteen total DUI arrests, over three-thousand dollars in drugs were confiscated, three-hundred dollars recovered property, and we had approximately nineteen-hundred-and-sixteen calls for service last year. As you can see, the fully staffed department gets the job done. Thanks to the mayor and the council for seeing that and giving us guys their job.
Any questions?
We lost a couple.
We lost one, went down to part-time, yeah. Thought we lived right there.
You got somebody in mind to replace him?
Yeah.
What do you got? Have you tested for it? Tested?
Yeah, I've already, we've already tested everything. We're just going late. I'll take a little bit longer, hire somebody after this went.
Thank you, Chief. Yep. Our chief is here? Our chief?
No, he's asked. I need to remember. Do you want me to?
Our chief is asked for?
I can do the commentary. He had fifty-two calls in December, five-hundred-and-fifty-four total calls, twenty-year, 2019. He was unable to be here today.
Good job to be able to speak. Mr. Alex?
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Good evening, councilman, everyone. Couple things on my agenda. First of all, we are at this halfway point in our current fiscal year. I wish I can tell you that the picture is a wonderful picture, but right now, I can say our expenditures are within budget. We are, we haven't outspent our budget, what we set aside for expenditures. What's lagging behind is our revenues to provide the expenditures for the money for those expenditures. And the one thing I always draw your attention to every month is where are, where's my major concern? My major concern is the BNO. We budgeted three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars a year for the BNO, which was what we collected the year before. We weren't anticipating anything major drop or anything major going up. And right now, for the first six months, we're down thirty-six thousand dollars. So basically, if we take a look at our current operating financial statement for the town, we're, our deficit's forty-seven. We already knew some of that would be there, because again, we're spending money out of the Tracy Vickers Fund to make improvements. That's expenses, that's going to show a loss because it's on our books, but we are operating at a loss. And we kind of knew that when we passed our budget, but we were always hopeful that it wasn't going to be that way. All I'm saying from our vantage point is, A, I know Miranda and staff got, are working diligently to collect BNOs.
We've done everything but hold guns to their head.
Well, that's why you have a full police force, so they can pull them, so all the guns to their heads, that's why we haven't. No. But the issue is, the collections are down. They, and again, thirty-six thousand down, we should have collected one-hundred-and-eighty-three, and we're, we're missing it by twenty percent. So that's significant. So if we, things, that trend continues, we have to look at, the only thing we can do is adjust expenses. We don't have the money, we have to adjust expenses. And especially as you start looking at going for our budget for next year, I always look at the last twelve months. And our, our next twelve months are looking pretty, the last twelve months now aren't looking really good, revenue-wise. So I'm just telling you that, and it's not the garbage, because again, I take, I always give you that report at the end. The garbage actually, we didn't make the truck payment, I think that was made the first of the month, was twenty-nine-hundred dollars, that's, the payment on the truck is less than that. So the garbage isn't our issue. We can still, we have collections on garbage too, but that's not the revenue source that concerns me, it's the BNO, that, that concern me. So just for the sake of what we do going in the, in the near future, I'm, I'm a month-to-month kind of person, I wait till I see the numbers before I fret too much, but I'm letting you know I am fretting. So, and, and it does bother me if that, that trend continues. So that, that's our major revenue source, we, that's forty percent of our budget. And if it's down, that hurts us all the way down, down the line. The other thing I asked you, you directed me, Mr. Mayor, last meeting, was home rule. What I've done is, and I thought the best way to present that is I gave Rob a book that, that an attorney has to look at, and he's the one to give us directions on deadlines and things that have to be done, is to, instead of me trying to describe it and go through it here, I would, I would suggest doing some kind of work, a work study, workstation, have a day we come in, and I've suggested, I've already asked Amber Miller Myers, the city clerk for the city of Logan, who just went through this process, she can come in and she would talk with us about what our process has to be if we wanted to do the home rule. There's a lot of things that have to be done. And, but again, the biggest thing is how much money, and again, I'll be, I'll be working with the, the staff to determine what's our potential for revenue being generated from home rule. And again, why would we look at home rule? I, I know, Mr. Robinson last week asked, last month asked, why home rule? And, and the issue is, it's a revenue source that, that would enable the city to do things beyond what it normally does. And we talked about that before, what can, what can the city do? Well, we are limited on what we can offer benefit-wise. We're doing the best we can pension-wise and/or otherwise, but we're limited because of funds. Can I use home rule monies to, A, defund benefits? The answer is yes. We have a lot of things, a lot of areas in town that need to be, at best, tore down. We can do that under our own statutes, the only thing it takes is money. A home rule can be done, you can generate a sales tax dollar to do that. And the upside of that is, yeah, that's money, and also what we have to do is, we have to look at some of our revenue sources in the BNO, there'll be a slight rollback, and we pick where we, what entities we want to have or help, because again, we know if we raise a sales tax, some entities will be hurting. We can roll back some of the BNO rate to help some of the businesses that may feel a slight drop in their, their sales because of it. And that has to be done, you have to roll something back as an exchange for generating the home rule. But you're able to do that, but it's, it's a lengthy process. Mr. Kinsel's looking at the book now, that's a shortcut. What, what, what actually City Logan is doing is getting a final pamphlet of everything that they did, that was presented to the Home Rule Board and the State Sales Tax Commission. It's been, everything's been tentatively approved, so that's being printed now. So that way, I'm giving him the work papers, the working copy that I had, but when we get out, I'll get an updated work copy from Mr. Kinsel, he's, he's the one that will be working with us, and, and a couple of things that City Logan could tell us, this is what you got to do now, get on early. And the big thing, again, how much money would home rule raise for the town of Chapmanville? It's based on sales tax. And the only thing we can look at are the BNOs for the, for the businesses that we know that have sales tax. I can tell you, the city of Logan, because it has, has a mall, is probably looking, my estimate was nine-hundred thousand dollars a year. And we also, we're looking at the town of Man. Theirs was minimum of sixty, and I actually think the town of Man is more like a hundred-and-twenty thousand. What revenue could the town of Chapmanville generate under the home rule? I, my gut feeling, just look without looking at it in depth, probably a quarter million dollars. And the thing that comes into play, which takes the longest, and that's the thing that, that Amber will tell anybody that asks about home rule, is you have to get the zip codes. And it takes a great deal of time, and the city of Logan actually hired E.L. Robinson to draw a map, because the state tax department has to have a map, because what they do, they send the, all the zip codes to, that have sales tax to Amazon, to Chewy, to Sam's. What happens, anything is delivered in those zip codes, if it's in the town of Chapmanville, you charge one percent tax. So I've already told my wife, she orders our dog food, comes in at the office, she orders stuff from Sam's, comes to the office. I live in Hidden Valley, I'm not in, in the municipality right now. Everything that I see, I see this lovely FedEx truck come into the office, and I'm going, honey, one percent on that. Why? Because you're delivering it here. And I don't mind, I mean, just realize because you're delivering it to Logan, starting July first, that's a one percent tax. And that's the issue with, with laying out that map, that map is detailed, and the city of Logan had to go to help, and it got, got some help from E.L. Robinson, which is an engineer that we're using, you all are already using on the water system, and did a great job. But it had to be specific, what we have at the courthouse won't work.
No.
We've tried.
No.
So you're saying Amazon.com would be a one percent?
Oh, anything is delivered to this, to this whole town.
Just to make sure, clarify that for myself.
Christmas time, Terry, we reached out to Terry.
I should be going, one percent on that delivery, one percent on that delivery, one percent on that.
Keep it delivered to my house.
The one percent, the one percent speed, we have a lot of places that are, Chapmanville, they, you know, two-five-five away.
Yes.
Outside of that, are, do they pay one percent?
No, it has to, we have to identify our boundary, and in this map, you identify your boundary, and then the, the residents that live within that boundary is what we have to identify. It's to the street and to the, the specific box number.
Well, then you just tell you something, you don't get anyone with a courthouse that fact.
Oh, we, we don't, you...
I have been up there, been up there, been up there, been up there, and they're just...
Yeah, that's why, we, we thought we could use that and then cut and paste, and that's, eventually, E.L. Robinson came by and said, hey, let me help, you need this.
Well, we have people that's in the city limits, but they have listed in the county district.
Understand.
I know, I mean, it is something...
But, but again, the issue is, whoever will work on that will look at, because again, when, when they, we have voter registration, and we know they're in the city based on their voter registration. So we have a way to look at that, but it has, it has to be drawn on a map. And that map has to be sent to the state tax department, and the reason sent to the state, as I said, you deal with Amazon and Chewy, again, I have three dogs, my daughter has three dogs, we get a lot of dog food in our office. And so my wife is going to contribute to the city of Logan, one percent of everything she's buying for our three months. And I've already warned her, don't complain, because you, you want to deliver here. And that's the same thing would happen in, in Chapmanville. So, and that's the, the issue is, that's, I, I can get you a better number once we start this process, because I can work with Kathy, and she can get some of the, the targets in the business we know that have sales tax. But it's substantial. And we can't use it to balance our budget. We're not allowed to use that just to, while we're just paying operating expenses, you have to come into it with a plan to do above and beyond what you're spending it for now. But as I said, hiring a new police officer, can we, we can't afford a new one, but we want one. And I take that out of transfer money, out of the home rule money, the answer is yes. Extra, things that you're not doing now. And, and again, that's the, I, I know Mr. Robinson's going to ask me about the home rules, I'm answering the question before I'm asked. But I would like to have a, a work study, where we just basically set a meeting and bring Amber in and bring me in, just walk through it, and then I'll have some numbers by then. What, what I think those, on the, because those numbers I have to come up with, I have to come up with anyway, somewhere in the, in the home rule process. Somebody's got to look to be in a force.
So you want to do that before the next thing?
If you'd like to. And then we set, set up a workshop, and then once you set a workshop, I can bring, I can ask Amber to come. She said, I talked to her this evening, she said she'd willingly come.
No, I'll have to work hand and see.
Right, again, if you're going to have the council here, which I want, you'll have to call, make it a call meeting, that way, you know, they can say you can't discuss business, even though we're not going to pass anything, that, to workshop. So that's, I have nothing more, other than saying that I think that's the best path to go, and that gets everybody's input, but again, until I come up with numbers, you really don't know what we're looking at. But again, with Amazon, with the out-of-town, those we don't know, because nobody pays BNO on those.
What about our audits? What about our, what situation with the audits?
I have forwarded everything I can to the state auditor's office, and I've also forwarded the financial statement to the auditor. Soon as I, soon as they finally send the final contract with Mike Celestra, he's ready. Because again, we, after the last meeting, I sent them the final piece of my puzzle, and, and Mike Celestra is just waiting for it, and he's eager, he's eager to get started. He needs to get started because the timeline is running. But I've, I've already forwarded the, my financial statements. As I said, I, I make, every year I'm required, as, as Perry will tell you, the statement I give you here, this is a working statement, this gives us enough information to help, help manage the town. What I have to send the state is a forty-page booger that has, you have to include the, the water, the sewer, and every other collateral organization that we're a part of. And it takes a while. And that one has been, and that's the one that takes me the longest, why, that's why, Mr. Mayor, thank you for getting me the PSC reports, I needed that, because that's what I needed to prepare to send to Mike. And it's been sent, sent to the state, sent to Mike Celestra, so the auditor's ready. That just, so, and I'll actually take, I'll send an email, maybe tomorrow I want to go in.
Anybody got any other questions or comments for Val?
I want to put you on the spot, Jeff. Having done a little bit of pressure work myself, I know there's a little more to keeping and presenting the material that you do than like keeping a checkbook at home, but it's been asked, just what all does our accountant do? Can you do it in less than five minutes? You ready for a good vlog?
Oh, yeah, I can talk as long or as short as you want me to, but...
There's, there's a lot that has to be done, that...
The biggest, the biggest aspect that you have, you've engaged me in, which normally, if you don't have an on-staff accountant, is preparing, providing financial statements, and providing the, doing the budget, and that's why I'm bringing you the, the bad news on the budget. Somebody has to do that, somebody has to present it in a way that makes sense, well, that's hopefully me making sense. The other thing we do is, as I said, I, we do the payrolls, and we're the ones that present, to prepare the payrolls, send the payrolls out, do it all the direct deposit, as well as doing all the filings. You've seen in the news, we have a sister city, sister town from here that is significantly owed the IRS, because somebody didn't slap somebody's hand along the way and said, pay your nine forty-ones. That's Madison. And the number we saw on the paper was six-hundred thousand dollars of back taxes. What, what's my job? If you don't pay your nine forty-ones, I come to council and say, the nine forty-ones aren't paid. Because again, legally, as a council, if we make the decision not to pay those nine forty-ones, you all are responsible for it. Okay, if you sign the check and you don't pay the nine forty-ones, you are responsible for it. So my job is to protect you all. If something happens where you don't, something's not being done, and I have to bring it to you, I, I've got to be an open book for you all, to protect you all. That's my job. Do the payrolls, do the financial statements, come to meetings, try to tell you what I've expensed. I go to various other meetings, like the one we're going to do with, with the home rule, that's part of my fee. I'm not going to bill for that. I just, you know, I do, the payroll, the general ledger coming to meetings, those just don't do in twenty minutes. And then we also pay your bills. Do the accounts payable. And again, when you do your accounts, you're, you're looking at that, somebody has to know which category to go in. Now, is it water, is it, is it fire, is it police, is it clerk, is it, which department? Guess who knows, has to do that. That's me.
I take all phone calls, answer all the questions on our behalf, file the reports, pretty much.
Boy, again, if anybody doesn't know the answer, they, they tend to come to my phone.
We'll just call Jeff and ask him.
Yeah, we'll just call Jeff, and you're very knowledgeable about the rules and regulations that we have to follow, and filings that we have to deal with on time, and you take care of that for us, do you not?
Yes, oh, significantly. That's my job.
Anybody else got questions? Call me. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Miranda?
Well, I'll just update you first on the ballgame, since everybody's curious. Right now, it's two-nothing Logan. So, it just started.
Part thirty-second.
And, five-thirty-seven, wait. But anyway, all of us in the office, I've been working really, really hard to get the BNO taxes and get the license in. Like I said, we've done all but hold guns to their head. I've been on the phone with a company in Texas that runs the towers, and who's not paying their twelve-thousand-dollar garbage bill. I've been on the phone with him every day for a week and a half. I get the runaround. We, we've sent it to our billing department, we've sent it here, we've sent it to where this needs to go, and, so we were talking in the office the other day, that there's really no consequences. Like, if you don't pay your BNO taxes, there's no consequences, because when I talked to Rob about it, you can't just go shut a business down. Like, we can't just go lock their doors because they haven't paid. There's a process, then we can, all we can do is really put a judgment label on them, and that's about it. So, I mean, and then when they do delink with garbage tickets, we write them a ticket, we suspend their license, and they don't even care. I mean, there's people that I suspended their license a year or so ago, and they're still driving due to garbage deals, and they're still not paying their garbage bills, so, I mean, there needs to be something as a consequence, something's going to happen, and they just, I mean, if you don't have to pay it or you don't pay it, like, if nothing's going to happen, you know, so we've got to work on something that's going to make them come in here, and it's going to make them come do what they need to do. Because like Jeff said, we are missing out on money, and we've sent them letters, we've contacted them, we've used it to them, I mean, talk to them daily, and it's still just the runaround. Or, oh yeah, we'll get down there. Or, we've had a business that's owed for three years and nobody came to pay them, and I mean, it's... It's not an easy job being in an office.
We had, I think, figure that we used the other day, we were talking about it, there are what, two-hundred and four?
Two-hundred and two.
Two-hundred and two businesses that pay, or are supposed to pay, BNO, right? And is it end of, what, the previous quarter?
Yeah, well, at the end of the last, well, by Wednesday of last week, one-hundred-and-eighty-one of the two-hundred and two were delinked.
Let them pay.
One-hundred-and-eighty-one of two-hundred and two. Now, they still have time, you know, to get in the last month, the last quarter, but that's a significant number of people that are let pay.
We're still actively trying to pay the, 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 sort of, new actions, and that's, and that's limited. We tried to, we took ten bad accounts to the magistrate's office.
That's not happening.
For sewage.
Mm-mm. That was garbage.
Garbage.
And we scheduled a thousand dollars during that, and it never happened with any of them, because the papers weren't served.
So we lost, we lost that one?
Yep.
In other words, paying fifty dollars to collect twenty-five dollars. And, uh, this is a very serious problem for us, and for you, and, uh, I don't know about the license, the business licenses that we're there on.
They're getting, I mean, there's, those were due in July, and there's people that skilled subject their business license currently.
It's something they look at, right?
Yeah.
Well, in another case, some businesses are going for the whole year without paying a single thing, yet we're picking up their trash, we're doing the things and putting this around the town, and they're a whole year behind when they come to pay their business, they come the next year. Some of them even wait until they file the taxes in April, so they're a year and a half almost behind. But we've carried the expense of taking care of them for that entire year, they've got to stop. They need to be paid quarterly, not yearly, especially if they pay late in the year.
So we're going to update the BNO forms also.
That's what I was going to say, I think, on, on the BNO papers, it gives you an option to pay quarterly or yearly, and that will have to be changed.
That has to be changed.
If they pay yearly, they're supposed to owe a percent of the fee. If they pay yearly, they're supposed to under percent to be paying the bottom level. But most people don't. They just go by the, the year, say year. It may also be that you would never think, would lie to you about something on their taxes, or try to say, "Oh, well, you know, we didn't know," or, "Oh, I'm sorry, this is late," or, you know. It's the runaround, constant runaround, all the time. And then you can remind them, "Oh, we'll get them that week. We'll get them this week." All that. Oh, it slipped my mind how about it. You know, just, I mean, it's a constant, a constant runaround. So we leave some kind of thirty, sixty, ninety plan, then we can do something, you know, give them. And I want to check with some people that I know, and with the state, and see how their process is.
I envision that, Detective. Develop a very austere project that overcomes, which we need to make some cuts. What those cuts will be, I don't know yet. We're going to , okay, to bring down our officials. We've had a little bit of land this week, and a little bit last week, to help improve the pictures. But, you know, it's just like the audit. That's going to cost us, what, about fifteen grand?
It's fourteen grand, something like that.
Imagine that. I mean, I think that's just wrong. Makes pay that much money to do audits, you know. You should make all you want. I'm not putting in.
I don't do any audits. So you can be mad all you want.
We need to be audited. I mean, you try, as much as I know, we've done everything we should have done at this point. But, but that just gives you some idea. You can, you can go out there and collect all this money, and one little thing from the government comes in and says, "You got to pay this man money." And I could imagine how much you owe somebody for a truck, or anything else, you've got to pay this. It takes a lot to overcome that. And we're not allowed to print that. But, not worth it, you know, with the government. And, anyhow, so, Ruprock, you got any great ideas about it here? But I have every confidence that we will overcome this. It was, it was about that bad when I became mayor. And maybe worse. We climbed out of it through vigorous attempts to collect. And we climbed out of this. Anything else, Miranda, that you've already pointed out?
That's just what everybody about, because we've been working on it, and everybody agrees.
Anybody got any questions or comments?
I have one question. Are we seeking some legal action? We might be able to technically recuse them, or?
We're looking into it, but so far, it's not.
I talked to her all about it. We talked about a judgment lien. And we're going to see what we can do to judgment lien them. But the thing to judgment lien is, we have to know how much money they've made. If they don't report the B. We don't.
No, we can make, we can do an estimate.
Oh, so we can just make up something and say?
You basically take a look at the last month and double it, and send them a bill saying, "It'll give you thirty days. See if you file your return, and we'll use this as our number." That's what the state does.
Yep.
So, do they, how can you do that?
Made two point seven million dollars last year, and we'd like our VNO taxes.
There we go. I mean, that's what I'm saying.
You watch them knocking on the door, and I only made six.
Well, last year, I sent out papers that I estimated, "Well, this is your VNO taxes. This isn't what, you know, you've not turned it in. This is what we think you two owe." And people came in really quick. But we haven't sent out letters yet this year because, of course, the quarter, the final quarter is not due until the fifteenth or the end of this month.
Historically, this time of year, they've slowed because of Christmas. If they made a lot of money at Christmas time, then they shouldn't VNO should be up. But, except, let's see, it does. But a lot of people got a lot of strange ideas out there about paying. We have a few businesses that believe that if they sell, and their office is located here, but if they actually sell something to somebody in Logan, they don't have to pay tax on it. We've had that question asked before. I think we have some clearance on that. What's your view there, Counselor?
Well, I mean, like I told, I told the land that the legislature, and Jeff may be familiar with it, last year, they changed the law to where we can publish any people that are owing VNO taxes that are behind. But they have to be three quarters behind, my recollection is, without looking at the statute. They have to be three quarters behind. And we have to give them thirty days. We have to give them notice so they can cure it, give them the right to cure it before we publish their name in the paper. But that's something, you know, some people don't like that. You know, they don't like that, names and business names being put in the paper like that. So that, I mean, that can be an effective tool. We just need to look at the, the most egregious offenders and start, and start their name.
Does that have to be a demo letter? That, that some of these guys do?
I think we, we can do it from the town. I can create a form, and I think that we can just write amounts in or write dates in. But I'll go back and look at the code section and draft something.
If I'm not mistaken, I remember when Joy Vance was the mayor. She sent Jacy around. And if they didn't pay it, she locked some doors.
You're not mistaken?
She locked them. I don't know if it was how legal it was.
Well, we can't. I was ready to blazon right now. He said, "We can't go just guns a blazing right now."
You're right about that. This is niggas who do it.
We've talked about it.
Well, I mean, I feel it's fine. Businesses to have a license, you know, when they say the next minute, you don't have a license, that's unfair.
Not fair.
But, you know, they have to, they have to be responsible. They can't, it's responsible payment because they get their services from this table. They get their services. They should be appreciative of the water and sewage system that's been upgraded, you know. We'll take care of it for a long time. Okay, anybody else? Got a couple pennies anyone to throw in on this one? Okay. Thank you, Liza. Station. We're going to answer at station. We don't have to go through all the sewage.
Okay. For the month of December, we brought in six hundred and seventy-five dollars in addition to the rent that we normally bring in. I'm very happy to say that the Bigger Center was awarded a one thousand dollar grant from WSAD Children's Charities. That will be used for Storytime. I started that back in October. The grant was originally for five hundred dollars. And after reviewing the letter that I wrote, they decided on one thousand dollars. So, Pride tree to the seniors to Christmas lots and park and Gaithers concert. We had pancake breakfast, Storytime in December. The fire department used the facility to wrap presents. We used it for a drop-off location for a pyjama drive. We got our town Christmas party with the Bigger Center. We had ugly sweaters. I had the senior open from two to seven one day. I was going to have it open on December the thirtieth, but I think they were, that there was some embarrassment and had to cancel. So I did it on Friday, January the third. Some upcoming happenings at the senior's Storytime for this month is scheduled for Thursday, January twenty-third. We're still trying to pinpoint a date for All Commerce Day. That's when pre-K students come. Last year, we did that with the seniors, and they dress up and they have little workshop shows. There's a paint party scheduled for February the sixth at six o'clock. Money for that is going to be due January thirty-first. And the Friendly Neighbor Show will be here to do a radio show on Saturday, February twenty-ninth. And there's more information to come about that. And then in the last meeting, I had asked about doing quarterly, setting aside one day for, you know, deciding on X amount of hours to have something with music, art, maybe free formless classes, involve the schools, music, art classes, theater, stuff like that from the schools, and having something here. And then the mayor's going to let me know on some arts and humanities grants that he has some contacts for.
Questions? All right. Got this, attended the water board meeting last week, and we had to approve a change order for one area because school classes were slowing down progress of the labor. And the company said that it costs a lot of money. So they approved the change order. But at the same time, they reported here, Rick Roberts reported, he's the sort of the manager of this, this thing, he reported that there's about seventy thousand leftover dollars. We can't use it, but they can use it for things at the water department. So I wanted to use it on recreation, but was told that by the state of West Virginia couldn't do that. But that's about it. Water board, water board meets, was it second Thursday evening, tomorrow?
First.
It was Thursday evening, tomorrow. It's after the council meeting, same week council meeting. It was different issue, this resume. The resume, suppose, changes day.
Yeah, it's the second Thursday. Because they had, they had first Thursday, we didn't do it either. So it's the second Thursday.
Okay. Joel? Okay. For, um, last meeting was last Wednesday. Credit for all reserve conservation, recreation, conservation, development, renovation. They're lacking in applications for grants. The, the grant money's there, the applications just aren't coming in yet. One thing that was discussed, our grant for the garden out there, which we're working on, still planning, brings eight hundred dollars. But it's going to bring some more behind paperwork for that. There was talk, and when I say talk, just talk among ourselves about developing the access to the river. Wants to contact us to see what they're going to do and what have you. The biggest problem I find out with some of these grants is, and Stacy can back me up on the ones we use here, you got to spend the money before you can get it back sometime. And even though I have a guarantee of, of the grant money, I'm still going to have to come up with funding to build these. And. Match your money. They'll match it a hundred percent, you know, up to. Well, it depends on the grant, but you have to match some of it. Right. You, well, not necessarily, no. You just have to spend the money first. If all I spend is eight hundred dollars, they'll give me a bit of that eight hundred bucks back. Well, if you were getting it from the state of West Virginia, they wouldn't let you spend it until they give you the grant. But so far, I have, I'm trying to bring loads on it now for, of course, lumber. I've figured out who to bring in on it for the top sort. When it comes to the plants and fertilizer, I've had one person call, and I haven't looked into this yet, but they, they supply all the plants and fertilizer right now for what the county does, for around eighty-four lumber. And they've made an offer to just tell, tell us how many you want, you know, how much you need. But I'll, I should have some things going on within the next week or so. Might see some markers out here, marking out where the boxes will be. I'm looking at eleven or twelve boxes. I'm thinking of eight or nine boxes, ten by four foot wide, and two boxes, eight by four foot wide. And I plan to make them each two foot in high. Plan to put about two to three inches of loose rock or what have you in the bottom of the drainage. And the rest of it will be soil or something. That's, that's going to be quite a bit of soil, believe it or not. Yeah. When you, when you think about how to get your cubic feet, you're length times the width, huh? Quite a bit. That's about it for a little bit of that one thing.
I may have a question on this. He's talking about his fertilizer. What are you, what you planning for having fertilizer on hand? Just having fertilizer out there? You got a place to store it, to put it? You know, you can't just leave fertilizer on the.
No, you cannot. No, you cannot. We have a number of volunteers that, who have storage space. And, you know, it's not going to take much, just somebody's garage or something like that, somebody trustworthy. I store it already, the gardens that I do. So, yeah, we've got that covered. Great question.
Neilson?
Um. Ren is already talking about that.
Yeah. Actually.
Yeah.
Next meeting in town council will be in February eleventh at six o'clock here in this room. Before we go, public having comments about this town?
I think I want to go, and I would like to ask Joel.
Well, we got, well, I have it on you here, okay?
Well, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. As you all may or may not be aware, Virginia's been in the national news recently for a lot of the anti-Second Amendment stances that they are taking, and some of the bills that they've started moving. In their legislature this year have been gun confiscation, red flag laws, magazine bans. It's got, it's getting to the point where our House of Delegates is actually getting ready to extend an invitation to Frederick County, Virginia, to become part of West Virginia. And I'm here tonight to tell everybody that we don't want to let this happen in West Virginia. Now, I'm not asking you to do a Second Amendment sanctuary for Chapmanville. We've done extremely well with our Second Amendment laws in West Virginia. One of them was passed a few years ago because the cities in, in West Virginia had laws that were more strict than the states. So we've done extremely well with our gun laws in West Virginia. But we are having a, our own Second Amendment Lobby Day at the Capitol. It is on President's Day, February twentieth. It's at seven thirty A.M. Now, that's just the time the Capitol opens. We'll probably actually get started about eight or nine. It's hosted by the West Virginia Citizens defensively. It's the largest Second Amendment lobby group in West Virginia. And we are extremely effective at what we do because we're not made up of paid lobbyists. We are the citizens. We go up there, we talk to our representatives, we let them know we're watching and that we're voting. So just wanted to invite you all to that. And anyone else in town who wants to go, you don't have to be a member of an organization. Just show up and talk to your representatives. Thank you very much.
And that is Monday, this coming Monday?
No, sir. February twentieth.
February twentieth.
Yeah. So the one coming Monday is for Richmond. It's Virginia Law Day.
Our's wired up. What else?
I have a question for Joel. Joel, the River Act says.
I have a question for Joel. Joel, the river access, did, what have they done about that, talking about that river access, or the, have them four trails, or the...
We tossed around and Kenny can vouch. Renovation, construction, however you want to put it, over here at the water treatment plant, sewage treatment, call it what it is. The contractor, if you live, if they live up to what they verbally promised, will create some sort of access.
Right there.
There. I think that's much better than what we, we currently have one kind of across the river there. If anybody's seen that, it's not, it's not safe and not, not even a secure place to go. So, if we can get it there, we'll have a little water parky, and I think it will enhance the town somewhat, tie in with the Hatfield Four Trail. Who knows, might even get a couple cabins down there.
They cut the brush around that one over there. It's not too bad anymore.
It's a climb down.
Oh, yeah. That used to bother me, but it's...
Yeah, take the kayak up there.
Well, I was... Used to.
I've got that 14-foot John boats many a time. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion when adjourned.
Okay. Labor say aye?
Aye.
Most of you are adjourned.